Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, November 28th, 2022. Ms. Sauber, could you please call the roll? Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Here.
Dr. Rohr?
Here.
Megan Sparks? Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge? My pledge is that we are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I please get an approval of the agenda as presented?
Move.
Second. Ms. Sauber, could you call the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Next is public participation, but we have none for this meeting. So we will skip that next portion and move on to the主席的报告，which we also do not have. There's a lot of committee hearings and stuff, so I'm sure in the next meeting we can still have a nice report for all of you. But nothing tonight. Okay. Next is student board reps.
We had a debacle with the microphone at the actual presentation, so. Anyway, so, good evening. My name is Jacob Beaver. I'm one of our senior board reps for this year. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our presentation at the Ohio School Board Association's Capitol Conference. This was on November 15th, 2022, at the Greater Gate Convention Center, downtown Columbus. We presented to, we had two rooms, and we were presenting to an audience of, I think, what'd you say?
Eighteen bodies.
Eight plus, which was way more than we expected. We expected like a dozen people. And so, we had a really good turnout. We're very happy about that. We're just trying to talk to individuals. This is the actual slideshow that we presented there about why we should implement student reps in our districts.
And for those who may not know, we did this project with other student representatives in our area. So we did it with Northmont and West Feralton as well, and I created this presentation for our. So we first started off with an agenda, so everybody knows what we're going to be covering. And then we introduced our superintendents. We also said a little something there, too. We talked about our application and selection process, and this actually sparked a lot of questions. And during our question and answers, this is where majority of our nations came from. We took some data, too, to see how this is a grounds position for students, and they're all very interested in it. So I'm sure that when we do our introductions, that will reach thirty-plus. We, all of the folks in the room, please.
So, in this form of presentation, we're going to discuss the specific accomplishments that each school worked for. We also introduced each student on the student board, and we had slides like this for each school. West Feralton and Northmont. And this is where each student board rep or reps got to speak about the things they accomplished working on and with the board. Centerville, we talked about pet therapy, physical changes to the building, Northmont. We discussed the addition of Black Student Union, and West Feralton discussed increasing student pride and talking with elementary schoolers and generally increased connectivity between the boards and student administration.
And then we talked about the April forum we did last year. This is where we talked about House School 565, so we're just talking about adding five, not voting students to be a higher worth education. This was really cool for us, talking about what we had been able to cover, what we were really excited about. This is our first time meeting the entire group in person, and we all clicked completely, and we were really excited to do the Capitol Conference together. And I don't think we ever shared a clip from the April forum, so I do have a clip here from what we did.
This is Rep. Lightbody, and the answer is yes, I have a couple.
Right ahead.
So, the first one is, just out of curiosity, have any of the student representatives who are here? Let me start by saying, wow, this has been just a great and very interesting morning for me. I've been taking notes and jotting down some of the ideas the students have shared. And I'm super impressed at the level of involvement of the students, but also the foresight and the willingness of your local boards to have created this group. I wish there were more across the state. So the question I want to ask is whether any of you, the students on the panel here, have actually watched any of the state board meetings? And what is your understanding of the issues that the state board addresses on a regular meeting?
Yeah, so this was, these are some, like, we got questions similar to this from some of the board members. And this was just an example of the questions that we got at our forum.
This is Rep.
And how we were advocating it. Also, kind of showed how some people at the state level do actually want this in more districts, so that would be nice.
Yeah, so, then on this slide, we kind of just talked about what the students were able to take away from working together and the thing at both the April forum and at the student board, what we take away from working for our district and adding students to the district. Thanks, I agree. We talked about how our public speaking skills have most definitely improved. Our leadership skills, we talked about how we got a better understanding of what it takes to run a district. Just things like that, like what we personally have gained from this series. And then we had our closing remarks. And this is where we had the questions from the audience members. I do have a clip at the very end of me answering a question that one of the members asked. First, here are some pictures of us moving up. This was the audience turnout. In the background, people like buying. All right, and the next clip is a question about one of the audience members asking about our application process and if students have any voice on that either. And so, this is to be answered. Oh, no, there's no more. So, at Centerville, a really cool thing is that all the student representatives have to be a part of the interview part for the next round of student representatives. So, this is my second year, so I was able to help be a part of the interview process for our three reps and new reps this year. And something that we need very, very much support is who is doing this for a resume builder and who's doing this for the passion. So, like Mrs. Sparks said, we'll have people who are like here for the value touring and all things like that, but you don't see passion. For me, when I applied for this position, I was recommended by my advisor to me. She knows that I'm very passionate about what I do. I actually came to my interview with a PowerPoint on what I wanted to change with data that I collected from surveys. So, I think you can just tell, like Mrs. Sparks said, who's here for the passion? Who's here because I want to work tomorrow?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
So, at Centerville, it varies most of the time. Sorry to the bad quality, but we talked about how we pick the reps who makes the course passion, so.
Here, Rishi, do you remember who you guys were talking against, who else was presenting at the same time you guys were? Oh, did they? All right, yeah, sorry, good job. To me, that's amazing that each people showed up and he was talking, so.
He showed up, too.
You know, I thought I recognized the guy in the back.
So, okay, so the day before this, on the fourteenth, okay?
How'd you get the mic up?
Yeah, is the mic on?
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry, you guys. It is, so it is.
Speak out.
Relax.
Okay, so, on the fourteenth, the day before our presentation, it is on, I promise you, it's on. Should I do this?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Don't have me put that back.
So, no, I won't. Okay, so, on the fourteenth, I went to the STEM school, the Dayton Regional STEM School in Kettering. They had their Student Lees Dayton Conference. This is an annual conference that is put on by students at the STEM school from junior and senior class. And it has members from across the community, educators from Wright State, UD, people from, or individuals and leaders from the Dayton Development Coalition, people from, or individuals from Jobs, Ohio. And they basically come in in forty-five minute breakout sessions and talk to students about their leadership opportunities and how to basically be a leader amongst their peers. And it's not talking just about how to be a boss with people, but how to act with empathy, how to lead people, like I said, not as a boss, but just to be a leader in your community for a cause or for a group. There were about one hundred twenty students at this conference, and I was the only kid from Centerville. It was open to anyone, and so I went up afterwards. I spoke with the principal from the STEM school, and I said, "I would absolutely love to try and increase our turnout at this conference." I feel like this is something that a lot of students could benefit from, leadership skills, presenting, you know, business, acknowledge when it comes to business. And so, I'm going to try and find a way to work with the STEM school and with our student board reps to increase turnout from Centerville. Because like I said, the enrollment was open to anyone, not, we got the link for Mrs. Sparks. She sent it to us because she got it from somebody, but it was open, open to anybody. So, I'm going to try to find a way to increase turnout. I took some notes. I took about eight pages of notes, so I'm not going to bore you with those. But they are there, and it was very interesting. I really enjoyed my time. Everyone there really enjoyed seeing the turnout, and the students were really happy as well, so.
We're not done. We're full of. I don't think this is over.
It's over.
Okay. I'd also like to talk about my new involvement with the Hope Place Freedom. Mr. Carroll has spoken to us about Hope Place Freedom for quite some time now, especially last year with our board reps. And earlier this week, or last week, I got invited to be part of the student leadership team for a Hope Place Freedom. The student leadership team has about twelve students, and we are working together with our advisors to figure out how we can make our district more inclusive and safe and place of belonging for all of our students. So, we're going to have a meeting soon. We're going to talk about how we can do that, and then we'll get into what happened. And then finally, I had a meeting on December fifteenth with all the elementary counselors for my box food collection. I talked about this, because we're going to put a bunch of box foods lined up like dominoes and not like that, if it's decided. We're just going to figure out how we can implement that with either like a lesson on generosity or giving back to the community in a way that we can let students know that they are helping their needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the treasurer's report from Sauber. Getting the number one. Tonight, just a couple of items from now on the agenda. I've requested an approval of the five-year forecast and assumptions for fiscal years 2023 through 2027. We've talked about this extensive, both at the September work session and also at last week's work session as well, but I did want to hit a few highlights. Just a reminder that the five-year forecast is a required document from the Ohio Department of Education that we have to file by November period, two days from now. And also, again, we do a revision in May. It has to be filed by May thirty-first. We do put this on our website as well, or at least the link to the Ohio Department of Education's website. If you go to the treasurer's page for Centerville City Schools, then you'll be able to find that as well. So it's accessible to the public. The numbers on the five-year forecast are the same numbers, like I mentioned, that we talked about in September and November, so there's no surprises there. You're well versed in what we've been talking about. But just a couple of the highlights in terms of revenue, our property taxes. I have some small increases for new construction built into that because of the growth in the community. Then, on the flip side, though, state funding, we have that very flat because we're on guarantee, and I don't anticipate seeing any increases in state funding for us over the five-year period. Expenses, I think it's always worth mentioning, and again, we talk about this every year. Ninety percent of our expenses, and this is just general fund as a reminder, this is only our general fund. But ninety, ninety percent of our expenses are in the wages and benefit categories. That seems a little high, but the reason that that's higher is because all of our capital improvements are happening out of our permanent improvement fund. Many districts don't have a permanent improvement fund, so that's why those, if you compare us to a neighboring school or somebody across the state, their wages and benefits might be down in eighty percent range, and that's because they're probably buying a lot of their capital things through their general fund. So, there's differences there. The other piece with expenses that I think is also worth mentioning is inflation. It's supply chain issues and delays of getting materials. I think especially in the, in the business office, there's a lot of, a lot of increasing costs and supply chain delays. So, for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, the historical years, we operated those two years at surplus, which means our revenues exceeded our expenses, and that's normal after passing the levy, which had happened in 2019. In twenty-three, we're projecting that we're going to begin to suspend it, and so we'll see this year how, how close to those projections we are. But, but we keep tabs on that every month, and I'll be updating you along the way. So again, that was, that was really quick. I'm happy to answer questions. But we have talked about this in detail at work sessions in the past, so that'll be a little bit later in the agenda. Next is Mr. Hurry.
Thank you, Mrs. Sparks, and good evening, everybody. Last weekend, last week of the meeting, in my absence, Mr. Turello and Mrs. Colley made a presentation on two proposed memorandums of understanding regarding the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. So, I just wanted to speak publicly a little bit tonight, review that, and give the board an opportunity to ask any questions that they may have. Essentially, what is at stake with the two MOUs? The state of Ohio has a mandated teacher evaluation program known as OTES one point zero. Starting with the 2018, 2019 school year, the state made significant changes to this evaluation platform. And so, went through lots of revisions, and with the start of last school year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we implemented OTES version two point zero. So, in our contract, we have language which speaks specifically to adopting a teacher evaluation program, the OTES program, and we also have language related to that that deals with reduction in force, which, whenever you go through a reduction in force by higher revised code, there are certain steps that you have to follow in law. So, the MOUs that Mr. Turello and Mrs. Colley talked about last week and some of those changes were all written to, were all formatted to the OTES one point zero version. So, with our implementation of OTES two point O, beginning with last school year, in order to modernize our contract language and bring it compliant to OTES two point zero, the changes that they spoke of last week are the substance of those new proposed MOUs. So, just a couple of other bullet points from their presentation. Both, as I said, both of the MOUs were written to conform to the original OTES one point zero system. Both of the new MOUs, and there were no changes from last week to this week. So, the materials that you received last week are identical here this evening. They've simply been revised to reflect the OTES two point zero language and changes made in the ORC and through the Ohio Department of Education. It's important to note that both of the MOUs were fully vetted by our legal counsel, our administration, and our Centerville Teachers Association, as well as our evaluation committee. So, the revisions, well, let me back up. All public schools were required to implement the new version two point zero for this school year. But I'm proud to say that we implemented it last year due to two years of really, really diligent work on the part of our evaluation committee to get to the point of implementation. So, we're actually on our second year, and so the information that you have that was presented last week for your approval tonight was just to modernize that language. So, that really concludes my comments unless there are comments from the board, questions from the board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurry. Next is Mr. Vogel.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to talk to you again about the veteran necessity. It's on the agenda for this evening for your approval. Again, and briefly talk about the power line that is kind of right behind you here that leads to the football stadium. It's caused cancellation of school here at ZHAS two times, on eight twenty-three, and then again on eleven seven. On eight twenty-three, we were able to find the break in the line and have that repaired. Everything was back up and working again. But then again, on eleven seven, that failed. And at that point, you know, we knew previously that this was something that needed to be fixed, but we were hoping we could make it till summer in order to get that replaced. But as it continued to happen, and just decided that we needed to get this fixed permanently right now. One of the reasons for that is we need generator power currently right now to heat the locker rooms, the concession stands. There's a cost associated with that generator. There's a cost associated with decent fuel that runs that generator. And we need to have somebody manually turn that generator on and off, you know, seven days a week. Right now, I'm working with insurance for coverage for that generator, for fuel depreciated value of that line. I mentioned that last week, but I have not heard back from the insurance company yet, so there's not an exact update on that yet. We did contact three companies, three companies that were previously getting estimates for this. Two were willing to provide a quote. There's a couple that were not, based on material. Been able to secure those, as we mentioned earlier, about supply chain issues and then work their availability. Ready Electric was one that was able to, to give us a quote and hold firm on that quote from last week. There was another company that I mentioned previously that might be able to get us a little bit cheaper price, but when I talked with them about getting approval this week, they could not guarantee a price based on the availability of the power line, the electric line itself, as well as the box. So, asking for the money there for Ready Electric to install the four-inch conduit, the power line, back to the stadium, as well as two, two-inch conduits for fiber cable. One of those for the stadium and the other for future needs back there. Questions? Thank you.
Would fiber cable reach to the other venues down in that area, the baseball, softball facilities? Any sports, anything else that we can need those?
So, there would be a line that would, that would stop basically at the concession stand there, and then they do have Wi-Fi there at the, at those stadiums, but this would provide more for the football stadium, so.
Down the road, it does provide an opportunity to connect that and run additional cable from the stadium to other facilities or other locations if we need to later.
Thank you.
As development takes place.
It's much cheaper to do that now than to do that at a different time.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Treasurer's recommendations. I'd like to consider approving the October 2023 financial statements, the monthly general fund rolling report, the attached reconciliation monthly fund activity report, in and out purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by the board resolution to only $22,874.59.
So moved.
Sorry.
Ms. Sauber, could you call the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. October twenty-fourth, 2022, regular meeting, November twenty-first, 2022, work session.
So moved.
Second. Can I have the roll called, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Consider approving the general fund five-year forecast and assumptions for the fiscal years 2023 through 2027 for submission to the Ohio Department of Education.
So moved.
Sorry.
Ms. Sauber, can I have a roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Next is superintendent recommendation. Schedule A, the superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. Schedule B, change of employment status or change of contract status. Schedule C, the listing of support staff personnel recommended for employment change and employment status. Schedules D and D one, the superintendent recommends the employment of personnel listed on schedules D and D one for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. And Schedule E, the superintendent recommends granting lease of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given.
So moved.
Second. Oh, Ms. Sauber, can I have a roll called, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Schedule D two, the superintendent recommends employment of personnel listed on Schedule D two for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Sauber, could you call the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Upstaying? Consider approving the reappointment of Barbara B. Dennison to the Washington Centerville Public Library Board of Trustees to another seven-year term that would begin on January first, 2023, through December thirty-first, 2029. So moved?
Second.
Ms. Sauber?
So, just a couple of comments, just to share. The library is still considered a separate entity, even though the law requires the Board of Education to appoint the trustees. So, the higher revised code, section thirty-three, seven-five, point fifteen, states that the Board of Education is required to appoint the trustee. Last month, at the regular library trustees meeting, they wanted to reappoint or approve Barbara Dennison. And so, tonight, this resolution is to appoint the trustee for a seven-year term. Dennison passed, but it gets a little bit confusing, was the Board of Education with the library trustees.
Can I have the roll, please? Ms. Sauber? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Consider, I'm sorry, consider approving a resolution declaring an urgent necessity exists and authorizing the execution of a contract with Ready Electric Company for replacement of fifty-year-old underground power cable from high school to the football field stadium for $181,703.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sauber, can I have the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Consider the memorandum of understanding between the Centerville Classroom Teachers Association to approve the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System two point O as a teacher evaluation program set forth by the Ohio Department of Education. Oh, and let's go to the top of it. Consider the memorandum of understanding between the Centerville Classroom Teachers Association to approve the reduction of teaching staff and non-renewal and termination of teacher staff member contracts based on the Ohio Teachers Evaluation System two point O ratings.
So moved, second, first, second, third.
Second. Just for fun, Ms. Sauber, can I have the roll again? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Durkoff?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Final comments regarding past or old business for Board of Education. Was there anything to add, Sam?
Yes, just a couple of comments. One, I'd like to just review some old business, I guess, from last week. Before we do that, I'm going to ask Adam Turello to come to the podium. We have an opportunity to pilot a math program in the district. It's a program that we like to apply for, it'll just, they need for approval. We'd always like to share these opportunities with the board and the public. So unless Adam kind of shared a little bit about the pilot project that's, we're going to apply for. And if we have to apply for this before our next board meeting, so we want to share a little bit about that tonight.
Yeah, apologize about the timing of this, but as we've been going through an approval process, it looks like we need board support, not necessarily a resolution pass. Basically, a few years ago, the state of Ohio approved a number of new courses that are considered Algebra II equivalents. Really what it does is allow students to take what is college preparatory classes in different branches of math. So instead of all of them going through what is considered calculus-based, which Algebra II is, it branches, it gives them opportunities to take things like statistics and discrete math and some of those other courses. So, we are currently actually piloting a course called Quantitative Reasoning. But sometime between last year and this year, they changed their application process, and so. And so, um, we were looking to add a course called discrete math and computer science to our math, um, program. Looking to pilot that, but, uh, like I said, as we were going through the application process, there was, um, a question about, you know, the board approving, specifically actually the board president approving of it. But we figured we would share with the entire board. So just looking for approval on that and happy to answer any questions if you have any about that.
How many sections do we offer when we're piloting a course?
Um, well, let me clarify. We are, we are piloting, um, part of the, uh, the pilot is receiving materials specifically from the state that, that help us address the standards for that course. So, um, we offered this year, I believe there's something in the neighborhood of four sections of our quantitative reasoning class. Um, there's a chance that some stu-, many students in that current course will move then into our stats and probability course and this course because these are semester courses. Uh, so potentially for sections.
So I guess ultimately my question is, is this adding a, a staff person? Or is this somebody that would switch from teaching an Algebra II section or a handful of Algebra II sections to now teaching the, the new?
Yeah, that's, that, the latter is more what, what, what it is. Students who would maybe, uh, not necessarily go into our standard pre-calculus course may elect to go into stats and probability and this course, discrete math and computer science. Okay. Thanks.
Yes, uh, so now kind of some old business items to just quickly share. Uh, last week, I shared several board policies that are, are due to be updated. Uh, I just want to give some feedback, um, from our, our conversation last week. I'd like to get these back on the agenda of our December meeting for approval. Uh, so my goal is to kind of share the updates, uh, answer some of your questions that you've already shared with me uh, about some of the policies that have to be updated. And hopefully we can do that, kind of through my weekly communication to the board, so we're ready to go. So I, there might be some additional questions, but I just want to reference back to the board policy snapshot page that I, I sent out or provided last week in the work session. Um, just a couple of changes. As I've been learning, some of the board policies, the routines from the OLA has changed. So letter B, Rick talks about, um, policy two-two, two-zero, adoption of course learning is actually listed as rejected. Does not have to come back, that would be board approved. Uh, that policy is no longer, there's no, no longer a need for that policy, uh, based on the OLA. Um, so we want to encourage the new superintendent to correct that moving forward. But I would like to replace B with letter I, which should be very similar to the ones I highlighted. Uh, letter I would be policy seventy-two seventeen, uh, which again goes back to a weapons policy for visitors. So that would include, uh, A, which is the administrative staff, H on your list for the certificate staff, I classified, and then the letter I would be seventy-two seventeen for, for visitors. So I know last week Allison had some questions about, um, the, uh, policies that I shared, especially the adds and the changes. The information I provided in the packet is all the new language for policy. So on those particular four policies, um, there's three versions, um, that have been updated. And so some of those changes have been lost in those, uh, those changes, but I can get some of those changes back so you can see. Um, but the new language is all listed in all the material that I gave you of those four particular policies. So, I know there may be some other questions. I, I answered some of those questions Megan had for some of the other policies listed. Uh, he's going to open it, see if he might have any other additional questions or if they want to share with me. We emailed it this week or.
I don't know what you want to do. I mean, I've got a bunch of little things to do now or I can just email you either way, so I.
I find, Howard, if you want to move forward, you want to email to me and then I can provide my answers to that and my weekly update. And then we'll, we'll have all, all the answers, all the questions, the answers for.
It might be better if you just email, because you're not gonna be able to respond to them probably tonight because you're gonna have to turn to somebody else or a lot.
Plus, we, and plus our December meeting is one meeting. We have the work session and then the board meeting. So it'll be one night to finalize, um, some of these changes. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
David, you were talking about the April meeting.
Wait, are you guys, okay?
I checked my calendar.
Okay. So we're, we need a motion changer.
We can do that later.
Yeah, what I, I'll do is to change the calendar and change the handout and I'll bring that back.
It's the second Monday, April twenty. Band comes from Sunday twenty-sixth. Any else? Nope, we're good. All right. Do they please have a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Sauber, could you call the roll one more time? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.